I call a regular meeting of the San Dimas City Council to order and ask you to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on our agenda this evening is Oral Communications. This is an opportunity for members of the audience to address the City Council. On any item not on the agenda, under the provisions of the Brown Act, the legislative body is prohibited from taking or engaging in discussion on any item not appearing on a posted agenda. Therefore, we can note your concerns, possibly answer questions, but we cannot otherwise engage in a discussion with you or with ourselves about the items that you bring up. So, in order to participate, we ask you to come forward to the microphone. We request that you give us your name and the city you live in. That is not a requirement, so if you choose to not tell us anything about yourself, you can still participate by talking to us. Anybody want to step forward and say anything? Nobody? Library?
Okay. Since nobody is conscious. So, my name is Nora Chen, and I'm the manager at the San Dimas Library. So, I just want to let you know that we are, the summer, of course, is coming, and we are going to have our summer reading program starting that on June 1st. People can already sign up for online summer reading program, and we are going to kick off our official, the program at the library on June 9th. And after that, every Wednesday, we do have a big performance show at the community building, which thanks for CT let us use that for free. And so, we, there's a lot of good programs, and every time, we do have a lot of audiences. Sometimes we have 100, and very popular one, we do have 200s. So, the programs including the puppet show, the dance performance, and juggler show, and the folk tale, and the music concert, and some musical steam programs. So, just check our website. And by the way, that we do have our new website address. Our official name right now is LA County Library, so we do have our new website is lacountylibrary.org, so which is easier to remember. So, and you, if you have looked into our website recently, you will see that we have a, we redesigned our website, and so we are rebranding our brand. So, it's our official name right now is LA County Library. Okay, so just visit our website and visit our library, so for more programs and information. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address the City Council? With no one coming forward, we're going to move on to the next item, which is oral, pardon me, the consent calendar. Consent calendar contains items that are expected typically to be approved without discussion, and unless a member of the City Council requests to remove an item for separate discussion, we generally approve the consent calendar by one vote. Anyone want to make any corrections or changes?
If not, I move approval.
I just wanted to remove 3D, the Golden Hills Road Project, from the consent calendar for a separate vote.
Okay.
And Mayor, I did want to point out, on, passed out were the minutes from the May 8th meeting. There was one revision made in the May 8th meeting minutes. It's on page six. This relates to the item on May 8th regarding the memory care facility. At the end of the discussion, the council reopened the meeting and continued it to the June 12th meeting, and by accident, there was a sentence put in there after the vote that said, "Mayor Morris, close the public hearing." That's incorrect, because the public hearing will be open on June 12th for that item. So, with that, there's the request to approve the consent calendar.
So, moved, except for D.
Second.
Anybody opposed to the motion? Without opposition, the motion carries. All items on a consent calendar except item D are approved as submitted. Item D, Josh?
Yes, just D. So, this is about the Golden Hills Road Project, a road that is, of course, needed to connect San Dimas Canyon Road with Laverne. It's the awarding of a contract, and I'm not opposed to the road. I'm going to vote against the bid for three reasons. I'm not satisfied that one oak tree is sufficiently protected in the plan, and it was in asking questions earlier at the study session.
Can I get you? My mic is on.
Okay, I'm going to talk, it's not on, but I'm going to talk louder, maybe, because I can talk louder. Anyway, yes, the Golden Hills Road Project, a needed road, but I was not satisfied that a particular oak tree that's up at the end of the road, actually, it might be, in Laverne, is sufficiently, that there's a sufficient will to preserve that oak tree. So, because the answer to the question was, it may be preserved, it may not. So, I think it can be preserved, so I'd like to make sure that it is. Secondly, there is not many lights on this street, which is good, but there's one at a county driveway, which would, that driveway would only be used in emergencies, as if I am understanding that correctly, and yet the light would be on all night, every night, and I don't think that's necessary. I think that particular stretch of road, is it on now? Should be under the dark skies policy. And lastly, the old road, which is not going to be used anymore, would be blocked off, I think should be turned into a hiking trail, and our plan for that, under what I understand, is to basically make it more natural, put trees in it, so people would be discouraged from hiking on it. And for those reasons, I'm voting against the contract. I mean, it's still a needed road, I'm certainly in favor of that, but just, those are the reasons for voting against it.
So, Mr. Mayor, all move that we accept staff's report and recommendation as outlined in items 1 through 4 on item 3D of the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and second to approve item 3D on the agenda. Any further discussion? Is anyone opposed other than, well, we might as well take a vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed say no.
No.
Carries by a 4-1 vote with Mr. Ebner voting no.
Thank you for your indulgence.
Okay, that brings us to public hearings. These public hearings that we have, the next, the ones that we have this evening, actually, are related to assessments for maintenance districts that have been in existence for many, many years. Because of changes in the law, we are not permitted to change the amount of the assessment, but each year, the recommendation is by the city staff to continue with the same rate that we had the previous year, but we are required to hold a public hearing. So, these are the public hearings to consider the open space maintenance district resolutions confirming the assessment. So, the first one is a public hearing regarding open space maintenance district number one, which is tract 32818, also known as Boulevard, and the adoption of the resolution confirming the assessment. If anyone in the audience would like to speak on the matter of the Boulevard Assessment District, now is your opportunity, and you can speak in favor, against, or just ask questions, whatever you'd like to say about this, this is the time and place. I see no one coming forward, so we're going to close the public hearing and ask the clerk to read the resolution by title.
Resolution 2018-27, a resolution of the City Council of the City of San Dimas, County of Los Angeles, confirming the diagram and assessment for fiscal year 2018 through 2019 for open space maintenance district number one, tract 32818 Boulevard.
Do we have a motion to waive further reading and adopt resolution 2018-27? We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and second. Any discussion? Is anybody opposed to the motion? Hearing no opposition, the motion carries by unanimous 5-0 vote, and we'll move on to the next public hearing, which is regarding open space maintenance district number one, annexation number three, tract 32841, also known as North Woods, and the adoption of a resolution confirming the assessment. We are now opening the public hearing for purposes of taking any comments that anybody would like to make regarding that assessment. Public hearing is open. Anybody? Seeing nobody coming forward, public hearing is closed, and will the clerk please read the resolution by title?
Resolution 2018-28, resolution of the City Council of the City of San Dimas, County of Los Angeles, confirming the diagram and assessment for fiscal year 2018, 2019 for open space maintenance district number one, annexation number three, tract 32841, North Woods.
Do we have a motion to waive further reading and adopt the resolution?
So, move. Second. Mayor, one second. Just, I was looking at the ordinance we just went through, the resolution on 3A is resolution 2018-XX, and then when we look at 4B, which is what we're considering right now, the resolution also has XX at the top, and then later is referred to as resolution 28, and then I have noticed in 3C, it actually also is 2018-XX. So, is there a number?
There's actually two sets. There, the set that came with the staff report, and then the one that's being approved with the actual number assigned at the end of that report.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
And the number is, the correct number is 201830 for the one that we actually adopted, and the one that will be voted on now is 2018-31. Nope?
It's 27 and 28.
So, 27 was the first one.
Oh, you're right. Pardon me. Pardon me, you're right.
Okay. Thank you.
Looking forward to the next one.
Who made the motion and the second?
Councilor Bader made the motion, and seconded by Mayor Fortuna.
Okay. Is there any objection to the motion? Hearing no objection, a motion will be carried by unanimous 5-0 vote. The next item is 4C. This is for the adoption of a resolution setting the special citywide parcel tax for fiscal year 2018, 2019. This is a parcel tax that is citywide for special landscape maintenance purposes. So, if anybody would like to make any, public hearing is open. If anybody would like to make any comment or ask any questions regarding this resolution, now is the time. Okay? I see nobody coming forward. This, the resolution that will be read is adopting a 1 percent, pardon me, now, wrong place. This is just setting the rate for the maintenance, and it does not include an increase.
Mr. Mayor, there's actually a choice for the council. There's two options.
One is an increase.
One is no increase on the rate, and the option two is an increase by the CPI, which is 3.8 percent.
Well, which one is?
And so, it's the pleasure of the council of which one. In the staff report, the resolutions weren't assigned numbers, but the number would be the next number of the resolutions, which would be 2018-29. So, whichever one you pick, it will be -29.
Okay. So, you have the resolutions before you. One is not to increase the rate, the other is to increase it by the cost of living, which we are permitted to do by voting on it each year. Do we have a motion one way or the other?
Yeah, I make a motion that we do staff's recommendation and do option number two, which is to increase it by the cost of living.
I second that motion.
Okay, then would you read the motion, the resolution by title? This would be 2018-29.
Resolution 2018-29, a resolution of the City Council of the City of San Dimas, County of Los Angeles, setting the special citywide parcel tax for fiscal year 2018 through 2019 to be used for landscape maintenance purpose, and that will be resolution, the option number two.
Which includes the cost of living increase. We have a motion, maybe we'll get out of the motions again, to include the waiving further reading. Is that okay with the first?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Anybody opposed to that motion?
All opposed.
All in favor of the motion?
Is that actually on the agenda?
Yes.
Any further discussion? Did you want to?
It's number C.
No, I was just, I was reviewing staff's report, and, you know, I, I think $32,000, you know, for an increase is, to me, reading the justification isn't there in my mind, so I'm not going to support the increase.
Anybody else want to say anything before we vote? Okay, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed say no.
No.
Okay, that carries by a 4-0 vote with Mr. Ryan.
4-1.
Pardon me, 4-1 vote with Mr. Vienna voting no. We'll now move on to other matters. First of these is the annual approval of the PEG fee. Mr. Michaelis.
Ken Dryden has a presentation. Ken?
This item is the annual reauthorization of the public access fee, which was originally established in September 2006. What this fee is for is it's a 1 percent fee for cable subscribers in San Dimas, which goes to support public access television. The only use of those fees can be for public access television. The City Council is required every year to reauthorize up to 1 percent of the fee for up to 1 percent. In the staff report, staff has kind of outlined the amount of the PEG fee that we have collected since 2009, and actual, our annual expenses. Our annual expenses exceed what the actual allocation are, and our expenses include our contract with the University of Laverne for managing the public access channel, as well as the equipment allocation that we budget every year for replacement and upgrades of equipment. It's proposed that next year, our expenditure is estimated to be $102,000, and it's projected that if we included the, or if we approved the 1 percent PEG fee, it would generate about $74,000. So, the general fund would still be contributing $27,000 to the PEG operations above and beyond what would be collected in the fee. If the fee were not imposed, the city's general fund would be paying the entire $102,000 to support the community access program. Staff's recommendation would be that the City Council, again this year, approve a resolution imposing the 1 percent PEG fee for fiscal year 1819. That concludes staff's report. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions that staff may have.
Maybe say who the fee falls upon.
The fee is collected from only cable television subscribers. If you have direct television or any other type of subscription, you would not pay the fee, because only cable television subscribers are the ones who actually have access to the city's public access channel, so they're the only ones who would be paying the fee.
Okay, would you read the resolution by title?
Resolution 2018-30, a resolution of the City Council of the City of San Dimas, County of Los Angeles, setting the public access fee for fiscal year 2018 through 2019 to be used for PEG purposes.
Do we have a motion to waive further reading and adopt resolution 2018-30?
So move.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Discussion?
You know, I still have some concerns. I can't, more often than not, I get a calls the next day about the service, about either the visual portion of the council meetings being blacked out, or a problem, or some sound issue, and it seems to be pretty much continuous. I, you know, several times, I've had to ask Ken to go check on it, because, you know, people are making, waving out there in the audience and things like that, and so then the next day, when you start hearing from folks, they're saying, "What happened to 30 seconds of the council meeting, or 20 seconds or this, or what did you guys actually do? Because my TV blacked out." And I can't imagine all these people's, that are calling, TVs all went on the fritz at the same time. So, I do have some concerns about the service that we're getting, and I'm going to oppose this at this point.
I too have heard the same comments, and I too will be opposing. I don't know, I don't know where, you know, in the short year that I've been here, I don't know that the service issues have necessarily been addressed, or the quality issues, which I understand there's some technical investment that may need to be made, but I just, anyways, for the purposes of this, that's where I'm at.
Any other comments?
Well, I'm going to support it, and by the way, I think we're still having a sound problem. You can't.
Nothing is going on on TV right now. You guys are not speaking loud enough, and there's no speakers up back there.
So, it's more of an audio issue, not necessarily with the broadcast, but with the system, even in the chambers, so we'll, you know, after this report, we'll try and get that adjusted. I guess the comment that I would make is that the imposition of the PEG fee, I would say would be separate from the contract, or if we have issues with the provider of the service, we can address that separately, but if we don't collect the fee, then the gen, we're going to continue to provide the service, whether it's with the University of Laverne or somebody else, but the general fund is going to have to pick up the entire cost of that $100,000, whether it's with Laverne or somebody else. So, I would just suggest that, you know, if we need to change providers or address that issue, that we might want to address that separately from the revenue source that pays for that service. That would be my only comment.
I would agree with those comments, because if there is a problem, we need to change providers, not collect the fee, because we need this fee even if we got another provider. But anyways.
And this allows the, or it goes toward our services that put the broadcast out on the, on Spectrum or Verizon, I believe, FiOS.
Frontier, yeah.
Frontier FiOS. It doesn't help with streaming on the Internet, because that's a separate thing, or is that?
It's kind of all bundled together.
Is that bundled together, because they're still filming it and then putting it out, streaming? Okay. I'm in favor of it, but after this segment, maybe we could see what's going on with the sound. But also, yeah, I'm supportive of it.
Okay. All, if nobody has anything else to say, we'll vote. So, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed say no.
No.
Okay, that carries by a vote of 3 to 2 with Mr. Bader and Mr. Vienna voting no.
I would really like us to address this issue, because it's ongoing, and I realize it's a 3-2 vote, and I understand that with no problem at all, but the folks that we're going to be billing, these people have the right to get the service that they're asking for.
I fully understand that, and we will definitely follow up.
I think one of the things is we may need to make a substantial, I don't know what substantial is, investment in the equipment.
And that could be the case.
You know, we've, some of the, we've replaced some, we've replaced the cameras, for example, but some of the equipment is, has been here for a long time, and they're patchwork kind of things to make it work and to patch into the cable company, and maybe we ought to just find out what it would take to replace everything that needs to be replaced.
Just for a question, did we change all that equipment when we moved back into the new city hall, or did we use the old equipment that we had?
A combination of both.
Okay.
We have been used, some of the pieces, some of the parts may still be the original that we had, not too much of it, maybe, but there, I know there was a board, a sound board or something that he, the control system that he had to replace, but I think we have a person who is very qualified that working in, if it is the equipment itself, maybe we just need to make the investment to make the service worthwhile.
Yeah, we'll evaluate that, but over the last six years since we moved back in, we pretty much replaced all of the equipment, but we'll see what we can do to evaluate what the problems are. I understand the council's concerns.
Well, we do need to find out what causes the problem, because it's relatively common that people have the problem, so.
Well, I certainly understand, Ken, what you were discussing about the funding and all of that, but I'm just hoping that being a little obstinate is going to send the message that we need to get it done.
I understand.
So, I appreciate all those comments. As for right now, is there any way of getting the sound back on right now, or are we out of luck, or?
Well, I have to do the next staff report, so if you give me a minute, I can go back and check with the sound operator to see.
And the only reason I mention it right now.
We'll give you a minute.
Give me, okay, give me a break.
Is because we're talking about business licenses next, and there may be some discussion.
Okay. Just give me one minute.
Sorry about that, but thank you.
Sorry. Are those monitors sound, sounded?
No, they're not.
So, they're muted?
Yeah. Yeah, the audio in the chambers themselves is what's being broadcast within the chambers.
Thank you.
The other is under delay, and it would create havoc with the system, I think. Okay, we're next, we're going on to item 5B, business license rates for 2018, 2019. Mr. Michaelis.
Ken, let me ask then, so the broadcast is also better as far as the sound?
We think so. I think they made the adjustments at the control panel, and then we've made some adjustments in here, so hopefully that the audio is more appropriate.
Okay, Ken, you have the presentation.
Thank you. Ordinance number 956, which was adopted in 1991, is the ordinance that establishes the business license fee rates for the businesses that operate within the city. When that was adopted, there was the ability for the City Council to consider an annual cost of living adjustment to those business license rates. annual cost of living adjustment to those business license rates. In, from 1995 to 2002, there was not a presentation for an increase in business license rates by the CPI, and in 2003, the city council realized that and asked staff to come back annually with a recommendation on increasing the business license rates by the annual CPI. The annual CPI for this year is 3.8 percent, and the resolution that's before you has two options. One would be to maintain the business license fees without the CPI, and the second option would be to adjust the business license fees by increasing the CPI by that 3.8 percent increase. In the staff report, we've outlined that there are just over 2,500 business license currently have on file. The average amount of a license is $187, and there are a number of business license categories, and we've outlined those categories in the staff report. The most typical category is the category, which is CO3, which is businesses with, with employees, and we've, in the chart, identified the types of businesses that fall within each of those categories, and actually given you, in some cases, examples of typical businesses by name that would operate within that category within the city. So for example, a, a small business that has five employees, currently their business license is $179.20, it would increase by $7.30 to $186.50. Another example would be a small, independent restaurant. Their average license is $299.90. It would increase by $11.40 to $311.30. And then going up to some of the larger categories, for example, a large supermarket such as Albertson's or Stater Brothers, the average license is $814.40. That would increase by $30.95 to $845.35. So, and that's just examples, there are others that are listed in the chart, in the staff report. If the city council approved the 3.8, 3.8 percent increase, that would generate an additional Currently, without the increased, business license collections are $475,000 annually, so again, this would increase that $475,000 by the $18,000. Staff's recommendation would be to keep with council policy and to keep up with the cost of living by increasing the business licenses by the cost of living of 3.8 percent, and adopting the resolution with option number two. This concludes staff's report, and I'd be more than happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Anybody have any questions, or Ken? Okay, would you read the resolution by title, please?
Resolution 2018-31, a resolution of the City Council of the City of San Dimas, County of Los Angeles, approving the city business license fee rates for fiscal year 2018 through 2019.
Do we have a motion to waive further reading and adopt Resolution 2018-31?
Just as a point of order, there's two options, correct?
Correct, option A or B.
The recommendation is, is for, we can discuss, we can discuss both options to get, to get to a motion.
Right, so I've just, I would move then that we maintain the business license fees at the current rate without an adjustment.
Okay, we have a motion to, to continue the, at the present rate. Is there a second to that motion? Anybody want a second? Sure.
When I'm reading, when I'm reading the illustration, we're talking about a few employees with $9.80 per employee. Could you explain that a little bit? Because we're, we're saying it's, my, uh.
We're, we're saying that a, a, a small business, you know, their, their fee is $299.90. What do we consider a small business, an amount of employees, and where does this $9.80 pop in? If a, a business has 20 employees.
Yeah, the base, the base rate is, there's a base amount, and then they pay so much per employee. And so if you have five employees, you're paying so much per employee. If you have 20 employees, you're paying that same amount, but by 20 employees.
Okay, but let me see, so let me read this, uh.
The base is $130, $130.
Okay, so, so a small business, say like Posetos. If Posetos had 20 employees, he, he's paying $299, plus 20 times 980?
No, no, that's, the $299 is the average. Again, the, the three examples that we gave, Posetos, Roadies, La Via Kitchen and Butter Cafe, all have different numbers of employees, so this was just an average, just to say, this is what the average of those four types of businesses might be paying. Some of them might be paying a little less because they have fewer employees, some might be paying a little bit more because they have a few more employees. The base number is $130, and then there's so much per employee that you have.
Okay. A question I had, Ken, was just, how do our business license fees line up when compared to neighboring cities? We've, we've compared those over, in various times.
Yeah, I think, I think last year we did a survey, and there, on the lower side, a lot of cities base their business license on grocery receipts, based upon how much the grocery receipts of the business, and typically, that methodology creates a higher business license. There are fewer cities that have our methodology, and so ours, based upon the survey that we did last year, are on the lower end.
And last year, I, I was satisfied with that particular comparison, you know, obviously, any little bit, any, any additional increase in the business license fees is, could be seen as, as a detriment to small businesses, but I think that overall, ours are pretty fair, and, you know, the businesses do get services from the city, obviously, so I, I, I'm in favor of this cost of living increase.
Well, we presently have a motion pending whether we're gonna get a second to re, keep the, to adopt the resolution with the option of not increasing the business license.
Actually, let me clarify that. The motion is to maintain the business license fees at the current rate. That just needs to be a motion, because the, the rates are already set.
Right.
The, the resolution that was read was for the 3.8 percent increase, and so if there's an interest in the increase, you adopt the resolution, because that will establish new fee, uh, new rate. So pending right now is just a motion.
To keep it, so we don't have to adopt the resolution.
To maintain the business license fee at the current rate, and that was made by Councilmember Vienna with no second.
Do we have a second to that motion? Without a second, the motion dies. For lack of a second, do we have another motion?
Yes, I make a motion that we adopt option two. Basically, if people want services, they have to pay for it, and basically, our, as we found out this evening, the cost of our sheriff contract is going up, bids for the projects that we're doing are going up, and I think that the services the city provides are adequate and fair, and so I would make that motion that we adopt option number two.
I'll, I'll second that motion.
Okay, that's a motion to adopt Resolution 2018-31, which includes a, a 3.8 percent cost of living increase.
I have some comments on this really quick.
Go ahead.
Obviously, I'm gonna oppose the motion. You know, it's easy to sit up here on the dais when you're not paying these fees and make these decisions, to take people's money, especially when it comes to the number of employees that they have, and what they're paying with workman's comp and all these other things. I agree that people should pay for the services they receive from the city, but last year, when we looked at this, there was a gain of $12,500 or something like that, which I jokingly made the connection that, you know, shortly thereafter, a microfiche machine was purchased, and it's another fund, and Larry has shown what good use that's been put to, and that's good. But the bottom line is, when I look at $18,000, you know, on the tail end of the renovation in downtown, on the tail end of a number of things, you know, and businesses that have closed in downtown, and other things like that, I just, I rack my brain about this. Is $18,000 that much money? When we prioritize other projects, just like we did in the budget study session, this city is willing to spend 40, 50, $100,000 for parks improvements and other things, but when you talk about being small business friendly, I understand we may be at the lower end, but, you know, we've done nothing for these people. I mean, I get keeping the status quo, so anyways, so that's where I'm at with it, so I'm not gonna support it.
You know, I, I can understand it, but I, I think we also have to recognize that we haven't done it yet, but that we will undoubtedly be giving the employees who provide these services an increase in pay. So the cost to provide these services is going up. That's the reason that we're able, the law is set that we, we, we don't have to go to a vote of the public to increase it by the cost of living, so, because the cost of living is simply a maintenance. It's not really an increase, because it's going to, the cost of us delivering the service increases, and I think that's why it, it, we did, in those years where we got way behind because we didn't increase it, we were paying the price for that, and we're, we're looking ahead, that in five years, our financial situation is gonna be totally different. We're gonna go up substantially in per, the next, starting next year for three or four years. It's gonna stay at that level for the next 35 years. We're going to, the sheriff's contract, there's no contract yet with the deputies, they're doing all that stuff. It, it's gone up 3 percent. Without, without that being factored in, that's gonna be factored in in the future, we know that our, that we're paying another $100,000 a year on the liability, all of these things, I think we, we're, we should not overlook the basic sources. This is not the biggest source of revenue we have, but the city, in a few years, is gonna be struggling for finances, because everything is flat. Sales, our sales taxes are flat because sales are flat. Our, our property tax doesn't go up by the cost of living, it goes up 2 percent maybe. We don't get all of our property tax. Other entities get a big part of our property tax, because we were a low property tax city, and I think we need to, we don't need to gouge people, but I think we need to maintain revenue streams that will enable the city to continue to provide services. People do want the services, I think, and that we need to provide them effectively and cost effectively, but it's going to cost more next year to provide these services than it did this year.
I don't disagree with much of what you said, Mayor, but it really is a question of priority, and, you know, for $18,000, when this accounts for less than 10 percent of the funding that goes in there, it just seems like we're just not gonna give these people a break, so if they're not our priority, all these other things are our priority, which I think marginalizes our businesses and, you know, makes them feel that we really don't care sometimes, but that's my opinion.
You know, I, I saw this thing coming on, I, I saw this coming on, and I, I've actually read into this discussion that we were gonna have, based on the discussion we had last year. So I actually reached out and went to several businesses and talked to them, and, and, you know, some of them said, hey, man, I, I could use a break, but I understand, and some of them said, hey, there's a cost of doing business, and, you know, maybe the $18,000 is, is not a big number, but when you start cumulatively looking at, and looking where we're going as a city and the things that we need to do, it, it's one of those, those deals. I went into the hardware store, and first thing the hardware store said to me, you know what, when you guys close the street and I lose $20, I don't ever get that $20 back. So, and, and he said, that's how, I realized that, that there are things going on, and so I, I'm going to support it, I, in years past, I, I haven't supported it, but I, I agree with what Kurt says, is that we're gonna have ongoing expenses, and this little bit may not sound like a lot right now, but downline, when you start adding things together, we have, we have a, a city, a business to run, so I'm gonna vote in favor.
Yeah, I, I agree with you, and if you read the local papers, there's three surrounding cities, West Covina, Laverne, Pomona, and there may be others, those are just the articles in the paper that are having financial problems, and it's partly because, there's many reasons, but one is not planning for the future. So I will support this motion.
Okay, if we're ready, we'll have the vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed say no.
No.
Okay, carries by a vote of four to one, with Mr. Vienna voting no. We'll now go back to oral communications. If anybody would like to talk to the city council now, you have another opportunity, and the microphone will even work.
Good evening, Council. Patrick Jones, 239 Avenue to Melissenda. I have two things that bother me. Number one is, I don't know whether this is a Brown Act violation or not, but the minutes are very vague in regards to the, to the Resolution 2018-29 about the citywide parcel tax. Everywhere else, you refer to how much you're gonna raise it, or what the different options are in the other, in the other, whether it's business license, or the PEG fee, or anything else, and yet, the, if somebody read this, and I read the, the agenda, and I didn't think anything about it, because it didn't really reflect that there was a proposal from staff to raise the, the parcel tax. So I don't know who's reviewing the agenda, or whatever, but this really feels like there was a hoodwink in here, and, and I don't, I don't think you're doing that, but I think somebody needs to pay attention to what you're informing on the agendas, because I don't think you were telling the whole story, or even close to the whole story, 'cause I think there might have been a few more people sitting up here going, wait a second, along this other, other discussion. Don't know, 'cause the way it was, was written. The other thing is about the, the PEG, or the, your system, you know, there's an issue about, you know, University of Laverne, and we've talked about that and all of that. The equipment that the city has, whether they recently bought it, or haven't bought it, or whatever, the people, the 30,000 people, or the 10,000 people that, that have access to, to the cable system, I don't know what the number is, what they watch on TV, if they watch, the reason they don't watch it is, number one, if there's anything on the screen, you can't read it. If one of you doesn't turn on your microphone, they can't hear it. Up until the time that, that you stopped the meeting to go have Ken try and find out why there wasn't an audio, none of that audio shows up on the recording. If you haven't listened to the meetings, when, and I, and I don't imagine you probably wanna relive the meetings, but you really should force yourself to go sit through a meeting on the television, and look at what people have to listen to, and see that the city's providing, that you've now asked to, to raise, and that's the argument, is you're investing in, in equipment and whatever, and then University of Laverne, you know, is just passing it through. The other, on a side note, the other issue is the, um, the company, whatever the, the cable company is, that provides the Channel 3, they don't want to make it a high definition. On Channel, on Channel 2 and Channel 4, and, and all of that, they're high definition, and that's one of the reasons that it's, that it's, that the picture is so bad, but if the cities got together and banded to the cable company and said, you know, we want a higher definition, it's not that hard to do, but the city's gonna have to step up, and, and it's gonna matter. It doesn't matter to the you up here, because you don't ever have to watch it, you don't ever have to listen to it, and I, and I resent the fact that we have to sit back here and remind you that the microphones aren't on, or, or not. You guys need to figure out some way to have that handled. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else like to address the city council? Okay, nobody coming forward, so we move on to the next item on our agenda, which is the city manager.
And it's also a television announcement. The mayor's call-in show will be on Thursday, May 24, 7:00 PM, on Channel 3 as a live broadcast, and it's also rebroadcast, and we'll try and speak up.
City attorney?
Yes, I just wanted to note that we do have some closed sessions. We have two of them. They're listed in items 7A and B of the agenda. One is conference with real property negotiators. This is regarding the successor agency-owned property that's essentially in the southeast corner of Bonita and Euclid, and both Blaine and myself will be in this closed session. The interested party is FNA Credit Union. The interested party is F and A Credit Union, and we'll be talking about price and terms of sale. Also, we have a conference with labor negotiators, and the negotiator represented for the city is Mr. Michaelis, and we'll be talking about the San Dimas Employees Association. Following the closed session, I do reconvene into this council chambers, and I make announcements of any actions that were taken that need to be announced following the closed session.
Thank you. Anything else?
No.
Okay. Okay. Members of the city council, first, we have recommendations for reappointments to the Parks and Recreation Commission. The terms of Catherine Smith and Lorraine Mora Perez have, will expire this month. They are eligible for reappointment and have expressed an interest in being reappointed. And the staff recommends that the city council reappoint, reappoint those two individuals.
I would move that we reappoint both of those individuals to the Parks and Rec Commission.
Second.
We have a motion, and second, any discussion? Is anyone opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries by unanimous vote, and they are appointed to a, another term. We, the next item is for council members' reports on meetings attended at the expense of the city. I guess we all have a report for that one, so somebody can, can make the report, and the rest of us can say, I was there too, or add whatever they want. So Ryan, we're going to start with you.
Yes, sir. Attended the California Contract Cities Association Conference Thursday to Sunday. So very educational, a lot of discussion on water and leadership and, you know, all kinds of interesting things. So it's good.
I'll add that I thought this conference was a little different than the others and enjoyable. Usually, you go to these conferences, and you've got a table up front, and there's three or four people, and they all take turns speaking about something. This one had, was, there were no, no sessions that were like that. There was a format like the Tonight Show, there was Jeopardy, about water things that I, boy, I tell you, there were experts up there, though, because I couldn't have answered a lot of the agency, what agency did this or that? USC professor on acting, talked about public speaking, and I thought it was pretty enjoyable. And we were all there, had our, staked out at our table there, and it was enjoyable. So, and, and, and worthwhile to go to is the main thing for us as city council members.
Emmett?
I too, I too was at the conference. The interesting parts of it is, is the, the people that come out, the civic leaders, Catherine Barker, Janet Hawn, from the, from the Board of Supervisors. They actually conducted a fire chat to discuss certain things that are going on in the county and how they support us, along, along with Sheriff Jim McDonald, and I believe is the Chief of Police of Southgate?
Yes.
Southgate. They were there, and they, they just talked about the ongoing situations with AB-109 and, and other things that we all have concerns about, the, the rising, you know, crime in certain areas of the community, and many, many conversations about homelessness. Homelessness is obviously, right now, that the, on the minds of all the civic leaders in every community. And, and, and I want to assure you that there are conversations here about what we're doing and how we're going to cope with, you know, and how we can help those folks out there that, that, you know, need the help. So I was there, and it was interesting, because it gives us an opportunity to come together and talk about certain ideas, and, and that was good.
Yes, I also attended the conference. I thought the most interesting thing was the speech given by Sheriff Jim McDonald, and when he discussed the mental illness problem that they have in the jail. And he said, that, which I've heard many times, that the county sheriff runs the largest mental hospital i- in the nation. Also, we took advantage to ethics training, which we all have to do, is required by the state, and it's a two-hour course, and we all took advantage of that, which is required every two years. Thank you.
I also attended, and they've covered everything very well, so I won't, won't belabor the point. We now have individual comments. Ryan?
Nothing.
John?
You know, I'm just going to mention the, the quality of the TV broadcast and the streaming. I'm not sure how, what the high definition or what the definition of the, of the recording is, but it is true that what goes out over the air or over the computer or, you know, looking at it later online, it, for one thing, it gives the public a way to keep tabs on, on what we're doing. And, and that should really, we should be concerned about the quality that's going out. We've all gotten calls, sometimes text messages during the meetings, saying, what the heck's going on with the, or what the, something else is going on with the TV, because I can't see anything, I can't hear anything. So, and as far as people speaking into the mics, it is true, maybe we should all go through training or something like that. But on the other hand, right now, for example, the volume isn't really optimal. It's a little too echoey, in, in my opinion. And there should be a way of somebody who is controlling that, whether it's with a little sound meter or something simple, to be able to adjust people's volumes, or some way of making sure the broadcast is a higher quality. As far as the high definition, I wish we could get that, because you, you look at the comparison of what Channel Three looks like compared to regular TV, and it's just like you're looking through a fishbowl or something. But anyway, so those are just some thoughts that Mr. Jones just made me think of, and I, I certainly agree that we need to up our game in that. And that's, that's about it.
Emmett?
Well, I have something extremely positive while in the evening on. I'm fortunate enough to be the city council liaison to Lone Hill Middle School. And on May ninth, I attended the Forty-first Annual Academic Awards Night. This is a school with approximately nine hundred students, and we honored over four hundred students with B-plus, three point five to four point oh averages. This doesn't include the students that got all Bs, because they weren't included in honoring. So when you think that four hundred students were honored, and many of them with all As, it's just, just amazing, the high quality of the school district that we have, and we're very, very fortunate to have the schools that we have in, in San Dimas and also Laverne. And it was a great evening. I really enjoyed it.
I agree with your, with your comments about our, our, we should be proud of our school district, and I think we all are. But one year, I was there, at Lone Hill School, when they were awarding those things, and there was some boy came through, and, and he had got straight As during his career. But he had three siblings that had gone through Lone Hill, and they had all gotten straight As. So that in this family of four, they never got anything except an A. And I kept thinking to myself, man, that was a lot of pressure on that kid. Can you imagine being the first in the family to get a B? But they're, they're a pretty impressive group there. We will now be recessing for five minutes to reconvene in the, in closed sessions in our conference room, as reported by the city attorney. And at the conclusion, however late that might be, he will report on any action was taken that is required to be reported upon. So we are in recess for five minutes. When we, when we adjourn after the closed session, we will adjourn to the next regular meeting, which will be on June twelfth, two thousand eighteen, at five PM for a budget study session. That's in the conference room next door. That is a public meeting. You're all welcome to attend. And that will be followed by the regular city council meeting at seven o'clock. So we are in recess.